Calling the meeting to order. We will begin with a roll call. Kathy, please. Can we have a roll call?
Kathy, either your mic is muted or...
Do we have everybody muted?
There you go.
We've got a little...
Okay, let me start that over. Terri Anna Thack.
Here.
Commissioner Labra.
Here.
Commissioner Holland.
Here.
Commissioner Tisdale. Commissioner Tisdale.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Zalinski.
Here.
Commissioner McGinn.
Here.
Commissioner Lark.
Here.
Commissioner Finch.
Commissioner Finch, you may be muted. Can't hear you.
Here.
Thank you.
Is that all commissioners who are present answer up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Before we go any further, I have some general instructions for all participants in the call tonight. Just reminding that the situation we're currently dealing with is constantly changing. And as part of the governor's Safe Start Proclamation, the Planning Commission is conducting our meeting remotely. Unfortunately, we are not able to allow members of the community to gather in person or attend. We want to protect you and your families and recognize the need for social distancing. We encourage you to provide comments or concerns on any matter via email at planning@everettwa.gov. You may also watch the meetings on Comcast Channel 21 or Frontier Channel 29 or online at www.everettwa.gov/everettchannelstream. You may also listen in telephonically if you do not have digital access. Please call 1-425-616-3920, conference ID 378-633-930. The public is allowed to participate via the same call-in number and conference ID. If you are accessing this meeting via phone, please be aware that there is about a 10-second delay on the broadcast and stream. If you wish to download the presentation materials or wish to comment and need to see the visual in real time, please visit everettwa.gov/PlanningCommission. I would like to remind anyone participating to please mute your microphone and on your phone, you can do that by pressing *6 until you might be called upon. When it is time for public input, Kathy Davis will be calling on those members of the community who have pre-registered to speak for tonight's hearing. After we've heard from those speakers, others on the line will be called on by the last four digits of your phone number and you'll be asked if you wish to speak. And remember that *6 toggles the mute function of your phone. Please make sure if you do speak that you state your name and address by way of introduction and that once finished, you please mute yourself again. If there are any disruptions or interruptions during the meeting, we do have a mechanism to remove any disruptive participants. Thank you for your patience and understanding. We know these are challenging times and we appreciate your willingness to be transparent. We continue to reach out to our community and to keep everyone informed as we navigate through this time. With that, I would ask if there is a motion to... if all commission members have had an opportunity to review the minutes from last meeting and if anyone has a motion to approve.
This is Commissioner Zalinski and I would move approval of the July 22 minutes.
This is Commissioner Labra. I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a vote?
Commissioner Lark.
Abstain.
Commissioner McGinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Yes.
Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Commissioner Labra.
Yes.
Terri Anna Thack.
I'll abstain.
So it looks like that the minutes are approved. Would that ask if there's any members of the commission who have anything to report? Anyone?
I can just... Oh, this is Commissioner Lark. I just want to say hello from South Korea and to reaffirm that, you know, all of my opinions expressed tonight are my own opinions. They do not represent that of the US Department of the Army or DOD. On top of that, I also want to say having an opportunity to travel around here in South Korea and see land use patterns here has been extremely informative, very engaging. And I have to say, I absolutely love how they manage their mass transit here and how they stack basically density right on top, literally skyscrapers right on top of metro stations. So it's been a very wonderful learning experience exploring this country. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Okay, with that, how about staff comments? David?
Yeah, David Stahlheim, interim planning director. Thank you, commission members, for spending another lovely evening here in Everett at a planning commission meeting. Just an update on upcoming meetings quickly is the next regular meeting is September 1st, two weeks from now, and we have no plans to have that meeting unless there's a reason at the end of the hearing tonight that the commission members feel to have a meeting on September 1st. But we are planning to have a special meeting on September 8th. And that special meeting on September 8th would be the day after Labor Day, but it would be to consider the comments and potential changes to the draft plan and code amendments that are being presented in a public hearing tonight and considering to take action and make a recommendation to city council on September 8th. We also are planning to have a public hearing the following week on September 15th for an application that you've probably heard of from Housing Hope for comprehensive plan amendment and rezone for property by Sequoia High School and the Norton Playfield. Want to remind commission members, I think we've talked about this before, is that this is a quasi judicial land use matter and so you should avoid having any communication with any proponents or opponents or anyone in the public regarding this application at this time. If anyone sends you any kind of communication, please forward that to Kathy Davis and Kathy will make sure that it's distributed to everyone on the commission so everyone has the same information going into decision-making on that. So September 15th is the planned public hearing for that application. So other than that, that's it for update right now.
Okay, so we do only have one major item on the agenda tonight. That is a public hearing on the rethink zoning proposals. Before we open the public hearing, though, I would ask if there's any planning commission members with questions or comments?
This is Commissioner Labra. I do have a question for David. Before we have our action meeting on September 8th, are we going to see the responses or action in response to all of the public comments?
Yes, you will. My intention is after tonight, we have public input is that we will be preparing a package of both responses, just a narrative that talks about, you know, what we heard and what our response and suggestions, recommendations are to the planning commission. And you'll get a package of amendments. I mean, we've seen, you know, several things already that we anticipate presenting to you for consideration of amendments to both the code and the plan as presented to you. Just, I did want to do a quick update before the hearing, too, is that there's one comment that, or a couple of comments that came in with respect to non-conforming lots and a merger clause. If people have dove into the public comments, which are all on the website. And that was something that we were doing before we scaled back some of our single-family changes. And so that was another staff member that was writing that chapter 38 for non-conforming and wasn't aware that that was in there. And so the issue of the merger clause and the potential infill in some of those single-family neighborhoods, we will be coming back to you with a recommendation to restore what the existing code provisions are for the merger lots. And so just wanted to get that upfront in case people wanted to speak to that tonight is that that was something that really should have been removed when we scaled back the changes in the single-family zones.
Commissioner Labra, any other questions?
Well, I sort of didn't understand their comments because it didn't seem like it was saying what they said it said. But I'll just wait to see your response.
Yeah, we'll go into responding to things as much as we can. And again, one of my intentions is to try to get all the responses done by the end of next week. And so we'll get a package to everyone by, hopefully in the mail by the 28th. And so it'll be out for both you and the public to review well in advance of your action meeting on the 8th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners with questions or comments at this time?
This is Tisdale. I wonder with all that's gone on with this COVID deal in the last four or five months, you listen to the real estate market and the finance market. And I guess my question is if, how hard is it going to be to amend what we may do? Because the question comes around people that are currently moving out that were in and were part of the solution of going vertical now. This new work from home and all those kinds of things. You know, as we're rethinking zoning here, the market is shifting underneath of us and it's... I guess, David, I ask a question. What if in a year, all that you're hearing about and some of the real estate activity and land acquisition activity that you're seeing, what if that needs to be modified?
The, so the code is, you know, first off, the intention of some of the writing that we've done is to provide a little bit more flexibility than has been done in the past. For example, when you look at the chapter 5 and the use tables, we have almost half the number of uses that we do in the existing code. So there's a lot more flexibility. It's a little bit more of a performance-based zoning approach. So rather than detail every type of commercial establishment and the parking requirements for it, it's a more generic description of retail and general office uses, things like that. And so I would say, first off, I think that we've kind of built a lot of that into it to hopefully be a little bit more nimble for the future. But second, it is just code things. And the only thing that really is less flexible is where you have to do a comprehensive plan amendment because that can only happen one time per year. And when we consolidated all the land use map designations a year, a year and a half ago now, we had reduced it from 30-some designations down to six. And so we have far greater flexibility now to deal with code amendments than we did in the past. And so if things come up, and I guarantee, I think you're right, Commissioner Tisdale, things will come up. It's not a if, it's probably a when. And that would be something that can be brought up to address. And, you know, we did that with the Metro Everett Plan. We found a few situations after we adopted Metro within the first year where we found some things that just weren't working and weren't written exactly the way that they were intended. And we came back with modifications within a couple of months of that.
Okay. I just, the reason I ask is I don't want to get skipped over again. I being the city of Everett, you know? And there's a push in Seattle. There's just a push in a lot of places and up and down the coast. I was in California two weeks ago and it's the same thing happening there. These people are, you know, the box store guys are going, whoa, 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 no, I don't want that store, I don't want that location. So now this landowner's there was, it's owned for a box store and now it's not. So if what you're telling me is it's going to actually be easier to turn that into another use, I just want to make sure that we have an open arm in the people that might be looking at us to develop or to buy or whatever, that we're, that we smell good, look pretty and have our lipstick on so that we, they come to Everett as opposed to Marysville and Monroe and Gold Bar and Stanwood and those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tisdale. Anyone, any other commissioners with questions or comments?
This is Commissioner Zalinski. I just have one suggestion for staff as it's preparing its responses to the public comments. I noticed in a couple of the comment letters, there was some concerns expressed about changing, changes that are being proposed to the decision-making process for various types of approvals that are presumably the ones covered in Title 15. So my suggestion would be to maybe prepare a table that shows, lists out all the various types of land use approvals that are covered in Title 15 and then indicate who is the decision-maker currently, like if it's the planning director or the hearing examiner, and then who would be the decision-maker under the proposed amendments? Just so it's clear exactly what the changes are. And I think it would also be helpful to, for the staff, to articulate the reasons for why the proposed change.
Yeah, and this is David Stahlheim. Just, so if you look at the summary documents that we provided to you and available on the website for Title 15, we've identified all the changes in the Title 15 procedures and decision-making for that. And so you can see those changes with respect to individual land use decisions. Really, that's a matter of looking at chapter 5 and the use tables. And since our use table is not the same use table as the previous use table, that's not a possible task. You just need to go through chapter 5 and if you see anything that's in chapter 5, and I think we presented the chapter 5 draft table dating back probably to January, February to the planning commission and also the city council. If you see anything in there that you think is a use that should be not a staff decision or not a planning director decision with notice to neighbors and needs to have a public hearing, then you just need to go through that use table and identify which uses you think need to move. We spent considerable amount of time internally and with some other customers going through that and feel comfortable with where we have things in that. But if the commission sees some uses that they have some questions, then just please go through chapter 5 and identify, you know, those things that might have a P, being permitted. That means there's no notice to neighbors on it. A is administrative, which has notice in a planning director decision. And then C is a public hearing in front of the hearing examiner. So if you see anything in that table that you think needs to move, then please let us know.
Commissioner Zalinski, anything else? Any other questions?
No, no further questions. I'm just not entirely sure that the summary that you prepared, David, actually does what I'm suggesting the table would do. But I'll give it a second look in case you're, if you're convinced that it really does.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to explain is that it's an impossible task to identify every land use change of what's right now a hearing examiner decision or a planning director decision and going to administrative because the existing chapter 5 and uses, I can't remember, has 160 or 170 different land use categories and now we're down to 80-some categories. And so it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. So you just, you just need to go, you know, you and the public need to go through chapter 5 and if you identify any of those permissions that need to move into a different category, I just need to know that list of what you have as part of that. You know, it's just, it's just not possible for us to go through and do what perhaps is being suggested right now. Would it be helpful for commissioners if I showed the screen of what that looks like? Does anybody want to see that?
I think that could be helpful.
Okay, let me, I will, I will do that here. Okay. So if you look at my screen, so this is in chapter 5 right now. And so what I'm saying is that these, these use tables are entirely new. They're largely built off the Metro Everett, but they are not what's citywide. And so you can't, I can't say how every one of these uses is the same as others. I mean, we have different definitions of dwellings, things like that. And so what I'm saying is that like for bed and breakfast houses right here for a B&amp;B, we have P in this category for multifamily going into commercial. P is permitted, that's no notice to neighbors. If, if you think it needs to be administrative or there's notice but a planning director decision, you just need to go through this type of list and identify which uses in here do you think are needed to move from one category to another. And so this is the residential table. And if I scroll down and hopefully you don't get too dizzy as I scroll here, if I look at the commercial table, for example, alcohol production, microbreweries, we have administrative use and UR4 zone with a note, it's only on mixed corridor streets. And so that's not a hearing examiner decision. This is a planning director decision with notice to neighbors right there, for example. And then P again is permitted. So if you just go through this and if you thought any of these things should change to a higher review level, just circle those and identify those and then send that in as part of the package that we can look at and respond to.
Thank you, David.
This is Commissioner Zalinski again. And I fully appreciate the difficulty of doing that kind of a table for this use table. But unless I'm misunderstanding some of the comments, I thought some of them had to do with other kinds of land use approvals that are discussed in Title 15 such as shoreline master program permits, variances, short plats, all of the things that are covered in there. If there were changes being made to the decision-maker on those kinds of actions, that that could be shown in a fairly simple table, I would think. But maybe there are no changes. But again, the comment letter I read, I thought they were dealing with that as much as with the uses in table 5.
Yes, there are changes and those are detailed in chapter, in Title 15. So those things tied back to, so this is all the description. So the changes in here, this talks about land divisions for short plats and plats. And this talks about shoreline jurisdiction right here. So that's all detailed there. And here's the detail about changes in historic. So all that is in Title 15 summary document.
And David, that document tells you who is the decision-maker today and who it would be under the proposed amendments?
Yes, it does. So, so right here, for example, says state law allows for summary approval by administrative staff of short plats or short subdivisions, which is the division of land into 10 lots, less than 10 lots. There's no requirement of state law for public notice of the application. And so the draft is consistent with that. And so that's...
So that's the way it's done now and that's the way it will be done in the future?
No, the way it's done now is, so this is a change. So this says changes from current practice. So the change right now is that there is notice for that. It's the same decision-maker, but there is notice for that.
I see. Okay.
And then as you walk down for shoreline permits, there's changes in the decision-making of who's the decision-maker. So the hearing examiner would hear shoreline variance, shoreline conditional use permits and any request to increase heights to accommodate industrial activities. Planning director would have other REV2 decisions and staff would be some other decisions. For shoreline permits, I want to make note is that the public notice requirements are actually set out in the Shoreline Management Act. And so none of the public notice requirements change except for the posting of property. So everyone within 300 feet of a shoreline permit would get notice of a shoreline permit as part of that. Historic, there's no changes in decision-making. There is change that the addition of accessory dwelling unit, alteration of significant features of a local registered property in additions to a building with three or more dwelling units would not get notice to neighbors, but the historic commission would be reviewed. And this has always been a planning director decision and will continue to be a planning director decision.
Okay, thank you, David.
Yeah, and I'll work to summarize that based on the comments so that you'll have that in a narrative, too.
Any other commissioner questions or comments at this time?
David? Am I, am I on?
You're on.
Yeah, go ahead.
How much input have you received from AGC or master builders or architects, land use folks? Have you gone out to a group of those folks that are actually going to have to use this and gotten any input?
Well, we've sent it out to a wide list of folks and, you know, so far, you know, and I've had a conversation with master builders. Honestly, their bigger interest was some of the infill housing, which we backed away from. So the issue of additional townhouses, things like that are the things that they were really interested in and wanted to be supportive of. And we're not doing that as part of the rethink. So I think that they've kind of backed out of looking at this anymore at this point because that's one of their primary interests. But they may be on the call tonight and perhaps they'll provide input.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing nothing else from commissioners, let's go ahead and open the public hearing for input. I don't know if we had anybody sign up in advance to speak. Kathy, um, do you have anybody that you, a list that you want to call through?
David Koenig?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah. Well, thank you very much. I sent a comment letter last week to the commission. And I hope you have the opportunity to read it. This is a very complicated effort that you're doing. And I don't, you know, you, you have a lot of responsibility in what you're doing and there's a lot going forward. And, and I, I'll make my comments and leave it at that. But when the pause on the single family and transit overlay happened and affected single family zone areas, I supported that. But there are code changes in the current proposal which would affect single family zone areas which are significant. Somebody has something coming in here, leave the mute. I am concerned that once it was communicated that single
Hey Dave, hey Dave. Could you pause it for just one second? Hey Jeff or PIPA, I, I think it's coming off of your bridge line.
Kathy, feel free to mute people in the public comments section.
It's still, I think it's coming across. I'm seeing it coming PIPA on your line. Okay, now it's gone. Oh, now it's back. Okay, PIPA, it's still coming in on your line, I think.
It is from somebody who is not muted in the meeting, in the comments meeting.
Okay.
If I could remind everybody who's not speaking at this time to please mute your microphone. We'd appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Koenig, sorry for the interruption here. We can, go ahead and resume.
Okay, I am concerned that once it was communicated that the single family and transit overlay were paused, then many citizens stopped following the rethink zoning effort. I recommend that code changes which affect single family areas be paused or rejected, including the subdivision changes, the merger clause removal, public input changes that which would reduce public notice requirements to citizens, changes to who makes land use decisions, criteria for modification of code standards. That's both in the standards of the design and the standards for lots. And then also the option for measuring the heights of buildings. I think this is really important because the inability to get together and a lot of people are under stress these days and they're more trying to survive than getting involved with civic engagement. First specific is public notice requirements. One specifically one is there, there's not a change to the historical commission making a decision, but there's a change that people who live in the area, the, the notice requirement goes away for, for their actions. So I have a strong belief after many years working in the public sector that it's important to have informed citizens and that should be a goal of the city. And that citizens bring good input to things and bring up perspectives which staff may not have thought of and, and the information of the neighborhood and history which staff may not know. Especially in Everett today, because there's been such a turnover in staff. Most staff there have only been there a short time and they don't have the background or the history of what is in the neighborhoods that the citizens who live there would do. The other was in changes and who makes the decisions. And then specifically the hearing examiner on shoreline permits. And I won't go into the details. Mary Cunningham and her comments go into detail in that and gives an example of that. Shoreline permits can be very controversial, especially related to public access. And there is a lot of pressure put on staff by the ports and by elected officials, i.e. the administration, to often not follow the standards that are there. And Mary described in her note to you in detail in a specific example recently, which I also commented on. And, and the hearing examiner went in a different position than what the staff was originally going to, which created more public access in that area. The other provision is related to land subdivision, the exemptions to minimum lot area width, depth, frontage and lot standards. Basically, there's a way without any real criteria that, you know, there's, there shows lot standards, but basically through the modification process, you can ignore all those things. And I think that's just, you know, you need to have something, some either reject that modification or come up with some criteria that why that could be changed is basically up to the planning director's discretion. And again, a lot of pressure is put on planning directors to modify codes. This is a wide open thing in terms of doing that. And along with also the standards related to the design of the buildings. So there's standards in the code for, in this code for lots and there's standards in the code for, you know, design of the building, but then the modification clause says, oh, don't worry, the planning director can change those things and you do what you want. And I, I think that's a very bad setup. The other is on provision nineteen oh six one ten density and lots size. I think there's a misspoken there. But also it, it, in, in a lot, in, in the R one zone, there is no minimum lot size. And so there's twelve thousand square feet is needed for both dwellings, but there isn't a minimum. So you could have in theory a two thousand square foot lot and a ten thousand square foot lot, which I don't think would stay in sta, you know, in character. So I have a suggestion in my note that no lot shall have an area less than four thousand square feet. So that would be, you'd have a four thousand and eight thousand, still different, but, but and give some flexibility. Next one in the R two zone section in the same area, the minimum lot area for due to dwell dwelling is seventy five hundred square feet. And then there's the statement, there is no minimum lot area, no lot area for individual lots within development. So there's, anyway, so, but I there suggests that the minimum lot size in any development is three thousand square feet. Also back in the R one, it says each dwelling may be less than six thousand square feet. It's, well, it's not a dwelling, it's a lot. So there's a, there's a misspoke in there. So it should be provided that the twelve thousand square foot is provided for both dwellings. And then I also have there that no lots should be area less than four thousand square feet. So it's, it shouldn't have been there about the size of the dwelling. It should have been there the size of the a lot. Then the modification of building heights, again, there's a effort here where you can, somebody can just suggest how heights are measured, period. And that can be, so anybody come up with a new idea on how to measure heights. And I don't think that's appropriate. So that's one B of nineteen point twenty two one hundred modification of building heights. That should not be allowed. Somebody could say, well, I want to, you know, go off the top of the telephone pole. And there's no criteria that wouldn't stop that. Okay, you can take it off the top of the telephone pole. I mean, there's no, there's no criteria to kind of limit you of what you want to do. I, I mentioned the, the merger clause should be rejected and I guess staff is agreeing with that. So I won't go into that. Also on environmental policy, reject the proposal eliminates requirement to meet all projects which exceed the CIPA thresholds for category exemption subject to review process to notice and posting. So there's, this notice and posting is in several areas. And in general, I don't think the city should be reducing its public notice and postings for anything for public input, which I had mentioned earlier that the public really is very, you know, very helpful in things. I won't go into, I, I had, my comments had something on the private streets. I'll let you read that. I'm not making any opinion on that. I'm just giving you, that's something that the home builders push very strongly for private roads, so they, they can build at a lesser standard. And so that's a big policy issue and, and you can read that in my, my note. Also tiny house communities, I don't know where those were allowed. I couldn't find that, you know, in sense of the, the use chart. But in conclusion, I think the above recommendations that I had for, that I bring forward are reasonable are based on what items I think rethink zoning proposals would have a negative effect on the community. Reducing information to citizens is not a desired approach to administrative in the code. Citizens have good ideas and input which needs to be brought to the table. There is no good reason to change who makes the decisions, planning commissions need to, the planning commission needs to be clear on the specifics of these chart, uh, changes before making a recommendation to council. No changes to shoreline master program on who makes decisions. I agree with Mike Zelinski. I had down here in my notes to have staff do a chart showing changes both in who makes a decision and the public notice requirements. And I think they could do it very easily in saying that currently a public notice is this, and this is where we're proposing on changing it. And you don't necessarily have to tie it to all the specific uses. I, I think it's important that you as a commission understand that and the city council. There isn't red line, things here means legislative format. So it's very hard for people to review this document and to see what the changes are because it's a, well, this is a whole new chapter. And that's the old chapter we're not doing anymore. Well, you, you know, you, you don't, you don't know what the changes are unless you read both documents. And then also that, that's very difficult to do. There is a need to be a minimum lot size defined in the code, not just any zone. I've suggested four thousand square feet in the R one and three thousand square feet in R two. But I, just leaving it open to the no standard, I think you get some crazy things. The modification of heights are measured, needs to be removed. The merger clause needs to stay in the code and make no changes to the CIPA notice and poster requirements for the citizens. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Koenig. Appreciate your, your input. Kathy, you have anyone else signed up? Kathy?
There, I'm sorry, I was muted. Yeah, I don't, no one else pre-registered to speak, but I have about fourteen guests.
Okay, so I think what this time, what, what Kathy's going to do is she's going to call out, call through the list of guests on the call today by the last four digits of your phone number. If you recognize those digits as yours and you are wishing to speak, that would be your opportunity to unmute your phone. And again, please identify yourself, your name and address. And, and then feel free to make your comments. We do ask you to try to keep it to, you know, two to three minutes if you can. There may be a lot of people who want to speak tonight. So Kathy, why don't you go ahead and start calling through the, the phone number list?
Okay. Andrea?
My comments aren't quite prepared. I didn't know I was on the list. So can you come back to me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you, Kathy.
Angela? Does it, Philip, Philip Poe?
Mr. Philip Poe, are you wishing to speak tonight?
Next on the list is David. Next on our list is Ismael Mohammed. It looks like he's leaving. I've got the JSH.
Hi, this is Jean Sette Hewitt on Grand Avenue in the Norton Grand Historic Overlay. First of all, I'd like to thank David Koenig for his comments. I think that unfortunately, a lot of what I wanted to talk about, Dave has brought up. So thank you, David. But I would, first of all, what I'd like to say is that the, some of the things that David was talking about for single family neighborhoods, I would like the planning commission to be aware of for these, this new upzone for R three zones. They're changing standards for R three zoning. And it increases the density, diminishes lot sizes and changes the standards. And it's all under the umbrella of consolidation, but it actually is an upzoning of our three residential neighborhoods that'll, I think negatively affect our historic overlays. One concern I have, just as an example, is the unlimited density. The only check on this new unlimited density would be that we are in the historic overlay. And as we're experiencing now, the historic overlay has no protection because it's subject to planning department's decision. Whereas if it were still part of an ordinance, we, we would only be allowed to have twenty nine dwellings per acre. So I'd like the planning commission to take a look at that. Because many, there have been times when the planning department has made a decision regardless of what the historical department, uh, commission has decided or advised. And in addition, I'm asking the planning commission halt the changes to the historical resources chapter. It was totally rewritten with little or no historical commission oversight or briefing. They haven't had a, they finally had a meeting in July, but from January through July, there were no meetings. And there was no discussion in July about the the rewritten chapter or briefing from the planning department. And I think that they need that. Because I think it weakens the protections for residential neighborhoods. It eliminates the need for like a demolition waiver for historic homes. And that concerns us as well in historic areas. And again, as David Koenig said, I had issues with notice to public notice for permit applications for historic zones, also the modification for building heights. Because it's a major concern for us for use and for height. Because we're up against unlimited density across a narrow alley in our backyards. And if the developer is allowed to choose where they're going to measure their building height from, we could end up with even more than, right now, we're going to have thirty five foot walls across the alley from historic homes. And that's kind of concludes my comments. I just really think that, I really appreciate David Koenig's and Mary's comments as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe I could interrupt here. This is Commissioner Yanisak. David Stahlheim, I, the issue of the, this upzone in the Norton Grand area, I think that's something that I think we previously talked about. And I thought I understood that that was something that was not moving forward. It's just been opportune maybe to to chime in on that or correct that if that, if I'm wrong about that.
No, the planning department actually, actually proposed downzoning us, which is something that we've wanted for years. And it would give us greater protections. It would still allow multifamily development, but give us greater protections against development across the alley from historic homes. And that was taken off the table July seventh. And we weren't even informed of that. David has given me some reasons why it was taken off. But with R three zoning now, it's my understanding that density is going to change in all R three zones unless you're in a historic overlay.
I don't, David, did, would you want to comment on that or?
Sure. The, so we've briefed the planning commission on this, on, on both topics of this. In the multifamily zones, we do not have any density limits. I think we talked about that at the last meeting or two meetings ago. And so the, the draft has no density limits with the exception that we have a density limit when you're in a historic overlay. And so we've used the existing density limit of 29 units per acre in the R3 zone. So there's no changes whatsoever in the Norton Grand Historic Overlay. It's currently zoned R3, would be zoned UR3. The current density limit is, is 29 units per acre and the proposed is 29 units per acre. As Jean mentioned, the adjacent zone, which is currently zoned urban residential, has no density limits currently and would not in the proposal either. So, so I think that answers the question.
Thank you. Thank you, David. And thank you for your comments as well. Kathy, do we have anyone else?
Yeah, how about Ismail Mohammed? I noticed you came back online.
Hello?
There you go.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was muted. Thank you so much. I only have, I have commented in last meeting also. There are some changes being suggested for the parking requirement for microzoning and the number of units on micro units. I don't know where are those and what are the changes being suggested? And also the tandem parking requirement, that's also being changed somewhat. I'm, I would like to know a little more about it. The third, I, third point that I wanted to make was in the, in the parking reduction requirements, there are certain, certain opportunities that can be available to reduce the parking requirement if we provide like a one stall for, or like a zip car or something like that. That is something in our zoning, in, in our codes. Maybe it's a little outdated right now because those zip cars and are not, have, we have not seen it in years in Everett. And in Seattle, all those three major companies are pulling back because of the Uber and, and all those car facilities, those are available. So I would suggest that if we can reconsider those codes, which are suggested for reducing the parking requirement and maybe add like electrical, electrical for, for the environment and electrical charging station that can help the community and people to encourage buy more towards electrical and not the hydrocarbon cars. That's all for today.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. Thank you.
The next on our participant list here is Laura Gurley.
Thank you. No comment tonight.
Thank you.
If I could interrupt real quickly, Mr. Tisdale, we're getting a good shot of you, the side of your head with your vid, with your video right now.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm looking at my screen. Sorry.
All right. I didn't know if you wanted to have your video on or not, so.
I don't know. I'm mixed up. Anyway.
Okay, the next participant I have listed is extension 7157.
Is that better, David?
Next extension is 0296.
This is Glance Casey, name is station Everett. And I'm happy to say that I appreciate David's work in this update. And also I'm happy to participate in the planning commission's decision and consideration. I support all the work that has been done and also want to comment on the CIPA requirements in that I believe CIPA is a positive public engagement tool that you can use. And I would encourage that, that will be used. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The last one I have listed is 7187. And you can just star six to mute if you'd like to speak.
7187? Okay, that's, so that's everyone who's showing up. Is there anyone else on the line who we did not call or we're not seeing here that is wishing to address the commission during this public hearing?
Yeah, it looks like Angela De Filippo would like.
Oh, right. Oh, great. Yes. Mr. Filippo, go ahead.
You can just toggle your microphone on the menu bar. Or star six if you're calling from your phone.
Kathy, I know we also previously skipped over Andrea. Was she, come back to her, Mr. Filippo?
Hi, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, go, go ahead. Can you also introduce yourself and your, your address for the record?
Sorry, I just had some, just brief agreements. I wanted to agree with Commissioner Tisdale. Being in the real estate community myself, there are lots of changes going on. And some of our changes, like he said, may not be applicable in a short amount of time. Also, I wanted to agree with, about citizens being informed of proposals in the historic districts. And I think one of Dave Coning's examples was that Historic Everett, which I'm a board member of, you know, has the opportunity to, to help and advise people and give them knowledge about, about historic homes, especially when we know that there's some kind of proposed change. Sometimes we have images that we can share and that type of thing. So I think giving public notice in the historic districts is important, as well as I agree with public notice as much as possible because taking away that notice, it's hard enough even when there is notice to get people involved. So not having notice really keeps the citizens out. And, and I also agree about the way building heights are measured. I've watched that happen recently where, you know, people decide to, different ways of changing of, of using building heights. So that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Filippo, ready and wishing to, wishing to speak or grow?
She, she's having trouble with her mic, but she did mention that she'll go ahead and provide us some written comments.
Okay. Is there anyone else on the line that we have not called yet that was wishing to speak tonight?
That's all on this list, but I've got.
Okay. Well, maybe I'll wait a few more seconds. But I know everyone is a little awkward for everybody and something through technology. There can be, finding that mute button at the right time can be difficult. So I guess I'll give one more opportunity. If there's anyone else here on the line who, go ahead and, and this be opportunity to speak up? Okay, well, definitely appreciate all of these comments and encourage anyone else to make, continue making written comments. Send those in and those are reviewed by, by staff and by the planning commissioners. It looks like there is no more, there are no more community members wishing to speak. Is there perhaps a motion to close the public hearing except to leave the public record open for written comments through 5:00 PM on Tuesday, September 8th of 2020? Do we get a motion?
Sheriff Yanisak, this is Commissioner Holland. I just wanted to say thank you for all the people that participated. I think we had great comments this evening. But I would make a motion to close the public hearing, except that the public record remain open for written comments through 5:00 PM, Tuesday, September 8th, 2020.
Thank you. Anyone to second?
This is Commissioner Zalinski. I would second the motion.
Thank you. Kathy, can you call for re-roll or vote?
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Labra?
Yes.
Sheriff Yanisak?
Yes. All right, so that closes the, the public hearing. But again, so everyone's clear, the, the record will remain open for written comments through the end of business on September 8th. So please do continue to submit those, those in writing. I'll turn now to any commissioners for any discussion, questions, comments, or requests to staff for review of any other matters prior to potential action at the September 8th meeting. Any, any commissioners?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Holland. I got a question for David. As we've heard some of the testimony tonight and some of the written stuff that we're going to get in and as we dive in a little bit deeper and you've got to make these presentations for a public hearing upcoming, would it be best for the commissioners to email you some thoughts that they have on any, any of the comments that we've received or any concerns that we have, just so you, you can get it in a timely manner? And, you know, if perhaps there is some, some changes or corrections that need to be made, you have an opportunity to do that. How would you like, at least the commission to proceed with you?
Yeah, this is David Stahlheim. I, yeah, I think that'd be great. So if you see some things in particular, you know, things that stand out that you, you want to make sure that are discussed and addressed by staff and the commission, then yeah, send me, send me that list. You know, there's, there's been a lot of, you know, not only the public input, but I continue to get additional internal input on some things. And so we, we've identified quite a few issues. And so we're going to have a fairly robust packet for you come for your next meeting. So you helping to make sure that I don't miss anything would be fantastic. So yeah, I would encourage that.
Great, thank you.
And I would encourage it as soon as possible too. So I need to turn around this by the end of next week so that you get it in time so you can digest it before a potential action meeting. So the sooner the better.
I hate to say this, this is Commissioner Labra. I hate to say this, but it might be useful to see that in a markup format so we can see what changed, what changed. Maybe just available online or something.
Yeah, no, we will, so the, most of the chapters that you know are actually new chapters. They're, you know, it's a repeal and replace. And so what you will get for any of those new chapters will be a document that'll be a redline version. So you'll, you'll see it and track changes from that. And for those chapters that are an amending chapter, it's, it's read on read. So it's hard to find it. We will summarize where those changes are so you'll be able to find them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other?
David?
Yes.
Tisdale again. Has legal looked at the legitimacy or that these meetings are and the actions of these meetings? We pass this as is and then we, we move it forward to the city council. Do these team meetings or Zoom or whatever is used, are, are they a legal, you know, does it prove, does, does it meet all the tests of Open Meetings Act? I, I guess that's my real question.
Yes, it does. Yeah. So the, the governor's executive order and other things have happened. It's, we're, we're not only conducting the business of the planning commission, but we're conducting the business of the city council via team. So the city council is not meeting in person either. They're meeting remotely as well.
Yeah. Okay. No, I just wanted to make sure we don't go through this and then find out we get to do it again.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a great question. At the very beginning of the emergency declarations by the governor, it was for essential business only and those changes were, I'm not sure when that took place, but other business can now be conducted because, you know, for Everett itself, for our, our things, we will not have any in-person meetings through the end of 2020. So this is our way of life until January at the earliest. And I'll speculate that it'll probably go into spring.
Okay. Thank you for the update.
You bet.
Any other discussion or question or comment?
Commissioner Holland here again. Now, it's a different topic, but I didn't hear anybody else speaking out. But I, the housing hope application, David, when do you think you can get us the application materials for that September meeting? You know, we've kind of looked at this before as a commission at a different level. And I'm just, it'd be nice to be able to get that early and digest some of that stuff.
Yeah, I, well, usually we send things out at least a, you know, a week in advance. Let me see what I, what I can do. I can, I can send you, I mean, there's, the public record is actually published on our, our website for docket application. So you can certainly see the application because that is part of the public record. So what I'll do is maybe send that, those links to you so you can start going through those documents because they will be part of the public record. So that'd be fine to share with you at this time.
Yeah, perfect. I appreciate that. I wasn't trying to give you additional work or anything. But yeah, if we can get a link to the, what's been submitted. I know you had asked for additional material, so it sounds like that's all in. So it can move forward now and it'd be great to be able to get a link and look at that stuff.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. We're just gonna, working on getting the, the notice of application out probably tomorrow to re-notify the neighbors of the hearing dates and things like that. So that's just gonna start going out. So PIPA says that there actually is. So PIPA says that there actually is, um, someone in the public wanting to ask a question. So, um, Cherry Anasak, do you want to be able to open it up for that?
Uh, yeah, I, I think we could do that. I know on this format, it, we have to be a little flexible, I think. Um, so I'd be happy to, to open up and take that question or comment.
Okay, Jeff or, uh, PIPA, go ahead and open the bridge to that person?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, David, um, with the public, the, um, Commissioner Labra asked if, um, if you were gonna send a red line version of the changes, would the public have access to that? Or is that just to the planning commission?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. No, the public will post that to our website and we'll notify folks. But that's one of the reasons I wanna get it out by, you know, my goal is the end of the 28th so that, uh, not only the planning commission can see it, but the public can see it as well. Uh, and that's why I asked for the written record to be open also to September 8th so that you can, uh, look at that and, uh, respond to any of those changes that, uh, any member of the public feels necessary.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Uh, Cherry Anasak, this is Commissioner Lark.
Go ahead.
Oh, yes. Hey, first I'd like to ask a question of clarification. As, as reading through the, um, as reading through this, I, I see a proposed, uh, zone, uh, land use changes. And I wanted to just to ask a quick question regarding the land use change to Walter Hall Golf Course down in South Everett. Uh, Dave, is, is that already slated in the, uh, in the, um, packet? Or is that, is that a proposed change that we have, that can still be discussed, uh, in a future meeting?
Are, are you referring to the attachments that I had in the memo?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we, uh, you can certainly, if you want to, uh, at this point, um, uh, or down the road. Um, what we had sent to you was, uh, some changes and it was, um, to the land use designations of several of, uh, city parks, um, in, um, originally we were, uh, before we did the single family, we were not gonna have a park zone. And then, uh, when I started looking at the land use table, the local resource lands included everything from industrial to residential. And, uh, that was not the intention of local resource land. So we went back into that and, uh, we have proposed to have a parks and open space designation on, uh, many of those, uh, parks that were, uh, in single family areas. Uh, in addition, there's one piece of port property and Laura Gurley was on the line earlier. I, I talked with, uh, the port, um, and, uh, it's a mitigation site, uh, in the, in the slough. I think Union Slough area. And, uh, uh, also we would have a parks and open space designation on that property that, uh, is surrounded by heavy industry. And so, is that, is that what kinda you're asking about or?
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah. I mean, uh, mostly what I'm most interested in is I just wanna kinda, because my, my ability to be, to participate in these is, um, is, well, I, I have some new challenges with the telecommute across an ocean and across a dateline. I, I do wanna get some comments in regarding, uh, at least specifically that proposed land use cha, cha, designation change for the Walter Hall, Walton Hall Golf Course. Uh, you know, currently right now, I, I think what we need to look at is, you know, how do we look at the best, the highest use of green space? I do not believe a golf course is the best and highest use of green space for, for that area. Having a $35, uh, uh, fee to go onto the course doesn't make it accessible to that community. Uh, on top of that, golf courses have environmental, uh, bring up a host of environmental concerns. Uh, I think we could do better green space there. And I think until we have a plan for better green space there, I don't wanna see that particular lot be designated as a park because I think that would lock in the worst way that we could be using that land, which is a golf course. The city could have a bet, much better integrated green space that connects the community to that area that allows for, uh, better utilization of the, of the open space and also can afford for more housing there. We're still in a housing crisis. We have about 30% of our people, you know, in this state are not gonna be able to pay rent and will be evicted. Uh, the housing crisis hasn't gone away because of COVID and we still need to be making sure that we're creating housing, especially if housing is affordable to the working families here in Everett. And making, and I would highly recommend that the city start building condos there and have an integrated housing and green space pla, uh, plan for that area to make sure that families who live here can afford to, uh, start, you know, buying homes and building a future here. And so that's why I'm extremely concerned by this proposal, uh, to bring that over and, uh, from, into, into green space and parks. I think it takes away a lot of cities discretion as well. Um, you know, there's a great book, The Hidden Wealth of Cities and the most underutilized resource cities have is the land that it owns. And, uh, I don't think that this, I think the city get, being given the fact it's gonna be cash strapped coming forward, coming out of this recession, uh, I don't know if the golf course is the best tool to make sure that it recovers successfully. All right. That being said, I definitely will bring this up again, but I appreciate you hearing me right now and me share my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, uh, staff will certainly take a look at that. Currently the property is zoned for parks and so that's what we're, we're just trying to reestablish that. But, uh, knowing, uh, also is Commissioner Lark mentioned is that there are some long-term plans to look at, uh, potential, um, future changes. And, um, there's, there's no specific plans other than to look at what that future is of, of that property. So, uh, so the discussions would be on the table at some point if there is a different use for that. I, I know that's the city's intention to, to take a good look at that.
Thank you, David. I really appreciate that.
Any other discussion?
David, this is Commissioner Yanisak and I guess I'll use this up here maybe to, to add, add my voice. I, I do, I, I guess I, um, the public comments and the comments of, of Mr. Koenig uh, and some others about the, the cha, some of the changes to the notice requirement. Um, I, I understand that, and I, we did talk about this at a meeting and it was presented as to, you know, kind of what some of those issues are. Um, but I am generally one who believes that kinda more notices and involvement is, is better than, than less. Um, even if that, you know, comment is, even if those comments and notices relate to something about which maybe the city has very little, um, discretion. Uh, so I guess I lend my voice as well to, um, maybe ask to have the staff look again at, at some of those changes and see if maybe there is some, maybe middle ground that could be established or found to, you know, maintain some greater, uh, you know, notice to public, at least some, some of the notices, uh, some of the notices just about, you know, posting, um, if not, you know, perhaps do away with any mailing of notice, that kinda thing. But, um, anyway, I just wanted to, to, my support to that and, um, suggest that that's something that maybe we could still be looked at.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll be glad to, uh, take a look. I'm having a conversation with, uh, the mayor's office, um, tomorrow regarding, uh, the subject. And so I'll be getting a little bit of a direction of, of where they view that as. Um, just, you know, I, I gotta, you know, be honest and blunt. I mean, our staffing levels are not anywhere near what they used to be. And, um, we have a six-month backlog of land use permits. And part of the backlog of land use permits is additional notice and public comments. And, and even, even to, to the other side of it, the number of modification requests that we do allow in the code right now, uh, consume a lot of time and, uh, of staff and, uh, backlog of that. And so, so part of that is, uh, is balancing, uh, us trying to, uh, move forward, uh, in these economic times and get projects out that are ready to, uh, proceed. But at the same time, there are some other things there. And so trying to, trying to find a middle ground on some of those things, we'll, we'll certainly, uh, do our best. But I, again, I wanna encourage the commission, uh, to, uh, make your own, uh, feelings, uh, known. So if you disagree with staff, uh, we don't take it personally. So if you wanna recommend something different to city council, uh, please, uh, please feel free to, uh, to make that recommendation.
Good. Thank you, David. And I appreciate that it is a balancing act and it is hard to find the right place. So, and I understand all the, all the concerns on, on all sides. And it's a, it's, it's a tricky balance. I, I, I understand. Any other commissioner or any other comments, questions, any other discussion? Okay, uh, David, any final, um, staff comments or, um, on regard to the public hearing?
No, uh, thank you very much. Uh, this is the first public hearing I attended in shorts in my, uh, 30-plus year career. So, um, this is a new, new one for me. So thank you, uh, everyone for tolerating my, uh, wardrobe that you didn't get to see tonight.
All right, great. Uh, is there any other business? Not aware of any, but, um, okay, I guess with, and one last chance for any commissioners, uh, wanted, concluding remark? Okay. Well, thank you everyone for participating. Thank you to all the members of the community. And remember that the, uh, the record will remain open for, um, written comments. And please continue to submit those, um, hopefully sooner rather than later, but it will be open until, through the, through the 8th. So, um, with that, uh, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Thanks. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Good night.